Sorry. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Hingham Publics -- the Hingham School Committee meeting and fiscal year 20 budget public hearing to order. Just to clarify, the meeting is starting at 7:00, but the budget hearing was posted for 7:30. So this might be a little bit clunky because we'll start with our business meeting from 7:00 to 7:30, and then we'll go to the public hearing and then go back to the business meeting. Just please, everyone, note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. And I just wanted to quickly recognize Libby wanted to say something?
I want to thank everybody on the school committee and in the -- on the board and school department and the town of Hingham for your support over the past several weeks. I greatly appreciate all of your kind words. And in giving me the time and space that I needed, I also want to thank the Community Preservation Committee for recommitting to their funds for the PRS playground. I did take note of that last Wednesday night, and it was a highlight of my week. And while I'm exhausted, both emotionally and physically, I'm very much looking forward to getting back into the swing of things with the school committee. Thank you.
We missed you. We're glad you're back. And again, we're sorry for your loss and your families. Thank you. All right. Agenda item two, approval of minutes. There are a number of meeting minutes here. So we'll get right to it. This could take a little while, so sorry, folks.
Okay. So let's start off. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on November 19th, 2018.
Anybody want a second? Carrie, thank you. Any discussion?
I noted some things. I have sent -- I have, just FYI, I have four of these minutes that I noted comments to. I did send them to Pam and to Kay electronically. There were some typos which I won't get into, but on the section 6.1 under new business, where the fourth paragraph, it says, Liza O'Reilly asked if, and instead of asked if, it should be stated noted that there are, and then the question mark should come out. And then under section eight, it was Carrie who attended the mask conference, not myself. And then under the long-range planning report, it's after the -- it says the walkthrough will take place December 1st, and it says directors are also invited. And I believe that should say other town committee members, because we weren't inviting the department directors, correct?
Carlos, do you recall?
Yeah, no, that is correct. We should be inviting --
Other town committee members?
Other town elected and appointed leaders.
Okay. All right. So that change should be made. And that was the -- those were the substantive comments I had on that, those minutes.
And I just had one, mine, I went to, which I was --
Pam, Pam. The title of the mask workshop that I went to was called Social Media Opportunities at Pitfalls, so just a correction there.
All right. Do we -- are you okay with the --
Yeah.
As noted?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? So all in favor of approving the minutes with those corrections to be made? Aye. All right. Any -- nope? Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee and the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee held on December 6th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Again, mine, our, and Pam. And when we were talking about who was going to be checking references, it says Carrie Neill will contact CPAC and PTO representatives. It should say CPAC and parent representatives, not necessarily PTOs.
Any other discussion? All in favor of amended, as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Great. Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session number one, held on January 3rd, 2019.
Second? Carrie, thank you. Any discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 7th, 2019.
Second? Thank you, Carlos. Any discussion?
I had a comment on this one in section 6.2 at the very end. It's the last sentence is, "This article as proposed needs to be socialized and requires a two-thirds vote." I believe we should clarify that. And I'm suggesting that requires a two-thirds vote and then add to pass at town meeting. And then in 6.3, the second sentence, "The MSBA did not accept Foster into its program." I'd like to add, "in December 2018." Just for clarification. And then, oh. Then at the end of 6.3, it says, "It was questioned whether this should be under the direction of the school building committee." Do we want to clarify that, as we had discussed with the advisory committee, under the -- I'm suggesting, under the direction of the school building committee because the school committee is legally responsible for overseeing funds for regular maintenance of the schools?
We know.
And that was -- that was the point of the discussion?
Right.
Okay. Yeah. So that was -- those were the -- let's see, wait a minute. Oh. Then down to section eight, Subcommittee and Project Reports, Long-Range Planning. Carlos De Silva noted that they are looking at the budget. It should say at the capital budget and going -- and then in the next sentence, "They hope to have their capital budget recommendation instead of their budget."
So, and -- yeah. Sorry. In eight, it says, Michelle Erkman did that for school budget, which will be presented to ADCOM has not been set, just the date for the presentation to the ADCOM had not been set yet.
Sorry, the date to the what?
The date for the school budget presentation to ADCOM had not been set yet.
And then under Salary Negotiations, the second sentence, "The process has been started."
Did you send this to anyone?
Yeah, I did. To say, "The process has been started," and then I'm adding, "To update the superintendent contract for whomever is selected." That's it.
Any other discussion? Everyone? Good to vote on those would be amended? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee budget work session number two, held on January 10th, 2019.
I'm sorry, second? Any second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Good. I'd just say September 10th? Or January 10th?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Great.
I have a question, since we weren't here for that meeting. Do we abstain or do we vote?
Yeah. You guys would abstain, and then we would abstain on the next one.
Okay.
So why don't one of you guys make the motion on?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. I can't with that. Any discussion?
Are you on 2.6?
Yes.
Well, my only question is, there were three members, which is not a quorum. So anybody have any thoughts?
Well, it was --
Why are you --
It was posted.
Say again?
It was posted.
We had posted that meeting.
It was posted.
The meeting was posted.
Right.
Okay. Because you thought you might have?
Yes.
A quorum?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
But you didn't.
But we did.
But just like the subcommittees, we write minutes to those. So we just felt it would be consistent since the meeting was posted to just --
Appointed them to go, so it's just, it's a courtesy.
Formal.
Yeah.
More formality, I guess. There's really nothing in them.
Yeah. It's documentation of the --
That's right.
Yeah. Aren't any other discussion? All in favor? Those over there.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January Okay. So on section seven, under adjournment, we need to put in the full statement of going into executive session. So I copied and pasted what was on the agenda. So to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of reviewing minutes and then reviewing non-union individual administrator contracts, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining session position. So that should be reflected in the minutes for the purpose of the -- what the purpose of the executive session was.
Any other discussion? All in favor with that change?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? No? All right. Thank you.
All right. Then the last one. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint meeting of the school committee and the advisory committee education Subcommittee held on January 27th, 2019.
A second? Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion?
So there, I noted two things on this. One was Libby Lewicki was not present. And at the end, it was agreed that we would meet on January 30th, not February 6th.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor as amended? Aye?
Aye.
Everybody? Anybody opposed? Nope? All right. Thank you very much. Had a lot of meetings, folks, so thank you for, and tell us for those, for those minutes. All right. So we have about 15 minutes. So item three on the agenda is questions and comments. So the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside time at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee but are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests are here that wish to speak, please come to the microphone. Is anyone here to speak about anything not on the agenda? Okay. And we'll move on to Dr. Gallo's superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have a copy of the February enrollment, and while I talked about this briefly last week, there were two of our school committee members who were not there, and this is important information. So this is a regular monthly report of enrollment. And what's significant about this one is that there, in fact, are 21 new students who have arrived in the Hingham Public Schools between October 1, which is our official count for the year, and the February 1 enrollment count. That doesn't typically happen during the year here, but it happened in this month, and that's a fair number of students. As well, there are six, in that 21, there are six additional kindergarten students. Now, we're not talking about the projection for next year. That's a totally different thing. Six additional students in this year's kindergarten over the number who were enrolled as of October 1. Again, a significant number. So when we talked in the budget about enrollment, we said the elementary enrollment was lower, but in fact, it's not as much lower as it was. And last year, at the end of the year, we were at 1902, and now, in February, we're at 1909. In fact, it's significantly larger. I'm getting a count from each of the three impacted schools by the shipyard, but I think a tentative count that Pam did today is 10 at Foster and like three and four at the middle and the high school, which isn't a big number. We'll clarify that. She wants to check it and give it to you in writing. But it is hard to count the number of students who are new from the new shipyard, because a lot of the addresses seem to be the same and not easy for the secretary even to discern whether it's the original Avalon or the new Avalon Residence. It's been in the 21 students. That's a lot. And Tony had commented when we were chatting about this, that he's already heard about three new students who will be entering his school. Now, we always get preschool students during the year, so that's not terribly unusual. So this number of preschool students is 78, and in October, we had, we had 75. So, you know, that's typically what happens at the preschool level. It's not typically what happens at the K through 12 level. The majority of those students are at the elementary level. There are only three or four each at the middle and the high school. But it's a number that we need to watch and pay attention to and also keep not aligning it, because the number is the number is the number, but checking it against what the projection for this year is. Also, you have in your packet the South Shore Education Collaborative Update. Every time there's a board meeting, the law says that the collaborative should provide each of the member districts with information, a summary of the budget status and enrollment status that they can take back to their member committees, and we usually share those with you and the special ed Subcommittee. The January report from Doug and Katie is included in the packet and a large number of projects in January, because we got this report last week, so there weren't as many for February. But I highlighted some that had to do with Foster, but every other building is in there as well. And so a great deal was accomplished, but it shows also that these preventive maintenance things do a lot of good for us, but it also shows how important they are, because even in our newer buildings, there are issues that arise that need to be taken care of. The, just I want to mention that the registration packets for September kindergarten will be available for parents to pick up on the week after the February vacation. But the actual registration period where we expect them to be returned is going to be between March 11th and March 15th. And the final deadline for receipt of those packets without incurring a penalty is March 29th. So that work is ongoing. There are two enclosures that I thought were in the packet. I don't, do you see them in your packet?
At the very end.
Okay. So those, I think, are interesting, interested reading. Some are only potential things that are going to be happening. Other are in the MAC packet, give kind of a summary of what the governor's budget suggested. I think they're well worth everyone's time in reading them. And anyway.
I actually know that I got on the governor's budget, I also saw a article today analyzing the governor's budget further for the education funding. And I'll try and send that around, but that was well worth reading, and it showed how the budget was more generous to certain communities than others. Not ours.
Exactly.
So.
Can I just ask a question about the facilities report?
You noted on here that Foster developed five separate steam leaks this month because of the age related to the piping infrastructure. Is that unusual, or does that happen every month?
No.
No.
To which?
Does it happen regularly, or is that unusual that it happened last month? The five steam leaks?
I guess I'm not sure what it is that you're talking about.
Does it --
Jump.
Yeah, they're more, they're more likely to happen the winter time, Carrie. So, I mean, what we've been doing this year is just sort of like, every year, we have steam leaks. And this year, they're just being more vigilant and reporting them all, because we want to include them all in the SOI.
Okay.
You know, for the MSBA. So it's, you know, five, whether that's large or not, I don't know, but we constantly have them. It sounds like a lot to me. Okay? But these could be smaller ones. And there is one that has some, you know, asbestos on it too, which has to be, you know, abated before they can actually do the repair. So some of these get to be pretty costly. You know, during the course of the year, we're likely to have five to 10 anyways. This seems like a lot.
Do you have a rough idea of what it would cost to repair those?
Well, it depends on the, it really depends on the length of pipe. So sometimes it could be like a couple thousand dollars, right? And then sometimes they might be like, you know, 10 or 12,000 dollars. So these, I don't, I don't know, you know, these look like, when there's five of them, I think there's smaller ones, and they're sort of sectionalized. We did replace traps a few years ago, so now steam's flowing, so we're better able to pick these up, because we can kind of see them. And, you know, as you know, the pipes have been, you know, that you can see visible rust on them and stuff. So they definitely had some condensation in them for years, so they're tender, and we do tend to replace them.
Thank you.
A thought on the facilities report for February projects.
Thank you, Asha.
Debbie Hartman for the project that she's put together. I'm looking forward to following the solar panels that will go on the high school, the roof at the high school.
What funded those?
By my generation's energy. Could be a --
But who were they? Were they a vendor or?
Must be. Sure.
Yeah. They were a vendor. I remember, I don't recall, I remember reading the contract, and it was, it was a donation. And these are to reinstall the solar panels that we once had there.
Yes.
That got knocked down, so, you know, from wind. You know why? I mean, I looked at the contract. I read the contract over. It said it was free. Why? I don't know.
Okay.
They didn't, I didn't see any gotcha or anything like that. There's no commitment, so, you know, I'm very, you know, grateful, and thank you very much.
I'll ring our things to come.
Yeah.
John, they are also with part of the Green Community Initiative. Can you please just talk about the $60,000 that we'll be getting?
Sure. Yes.
Where are we going to be using it?
Michelle Montziger had notified me a couple of weeks back and said that we have been, the town of Hingham, I believe, has been awarded like $142,000 in green community funding. You know, at the same time, they've come up with a actual, a listing of all the projects that they identified during the, you know, through the audit. So Michelle came down and talked to me and suggested that, you know, the town was going to spend 60, we should spend 60, and we'd keep that other 20 there for, you know, either some training or personnel, or we'd figure out what to do with it. So, you know, with that, I've spoken to Michelle, and we went over projects. I talked to Doug and Katie about the projects. And what we're searching for on this list, the list is, it's a nice list. It gets all the individual projects, and then it's determined, it tells you what the MBTU savings is, or the energy savings for the project, and it gives you the estimated cost for doing the project and the dollar of energy savings that you would get. And what we're looking for, of course, is we're looking for the highest energy savers for the lowest type of dollars. And, you know, I'm further looking for them that are in sync with what our regular capital plan is, so that we can, you know, use this money to kind of, you know, work with that, work within our capital structure. So we've looked at three projects for Hingham. One is the demand ventilation project at Hingham High School. That's about, I think that was like $30,000, but that's got a lot of savings. There's, the savings, when you look at the savings, the MMBTUs, they may go from like 46, you know, a lot of them in the, between 100 and, you know, 50 and 100, right? And then you have some that are like, you know, in the thousands. This one was 549, but the ones that are in the thousands, sometimes a project cost is 200, $300,000. You know, do your boilers, and you're going to save, you know, 200, 2,000 MBTU's. But this demand ventilation's good, because it's like 549. And then we have some pumps, putting variable drives on some pumps themselves, you know, and that could save about 90. And then we'd use the other 14,000 or 15,000 dollars at the high school to change out some lights to LEDs. And LED lighting is good savings as well, and it's a good payback. But they showed a $200,000 project for, you know, 1,000 MBTU's, so we'll get 15,000 of that. So.
Can't you misuse money's? Award be carried forward?
That I don't know, Ed. But I mean, we would, I think between Michelle and I, we would, we would plan to use them. The town is going to do a pump, I believe, at Broad Cove, which had, that's about a $60,000 project for them that they need to get done. So at least that's what Michelle and I talked about, and Michelle will be writing the grants for it.
Not Michelle.
No, Michelle Montziger, the Assistant Town Administrator. I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right.
She's everywhere. She's everywhere.
Sorry. We have one minute before we have to move to the public hearing. Emma, do you have a, is your update, your communication relatively quick? Do you want to do it before we go into the public hearing for the budget? Is that okay? All right.
First off, for sports, at the end of January, the boys' track team relays brought two new all-time Hingham High School winter track records. Najjar Thorne, Hall and Hill ran the 4x200, and Kindler, Hall, Hill, and Hesselmann ran the sprint medal, medal. The boys' and girls' basketball teams both ranked nationally in the 2019 Coaches vs. Cancer Three Point Challenge. And the boys' hockey team is the top-ranked public school in the state. And for National History Day, which happened right before mid-years or right after mid-years took place, the junior class participated in the National History Day competition. Each student had to complete months of research and produce a project varying from a website, poster, paper, documentary, or performance. Students continued to move on in hopes to make it all the way to nationals. Three Hingham High School choral students were accepted to the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Music Festival, and they will perform at the Symphony Hall on March 2nd. And of course, Ms. Papuga, the ceramics teacher, continues to create Solastic Art Award winners. And you can check out her website at hanghampottery.weebly.com for pictures. Also, the Graphic Design and Photography Program Also, the graphic design and photography program produced 32 Scholastic Art Awards. This class is taught by Mr. Isho, and you can visit his website also to see those pieces. And the Hingham High School continues with winter sports clubs and programs slashing the trash. And this program is where each sport club or group is given a day to go through the trash after each lunch to make sure things are in the right place. And the team with the least amount of mistakes wins. So you're overall trying to not get points by having something in the wrong trash can. And dance team has been the winner every year so far, so we'll see if they'll pull through. And lastly, Ashley Buckenridge was the school's Poetry Out Loud winner, and Ashley will represent the school at the regional semifinals on March 2nd.
Boys and girls who won the title?
On basketball?
Yes. Patriot League title, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Time. Thank you. So we will, I will call to order the public hearing for the fiscal year 20 operating budget for the school department. We will.
Have a presentation of the administration's proposed operating budget, then move to comments and questions about the operating budget, and then adjourn back to our regular meeting.
It's the first time we're using this computer with the new attachments for the screen.
Do you have it as a PowerPoint on your desktop?
Hmm?
Is it as a PowerPoint on your desktop?
No.
While Dr. Gallo brings up the presentation, just for school committee members, there's a copy of the forecast on your, on your desks or places. Hot off the presses, we, Liza and I and Dr. Gallo and John attended the forecast meeting with the town administrator earlier this evening. So that's the most up-to-date information we have.
Did you send it to me?
Is it the overview?
No.
Right there, no? I, what's it called? You know, the presentation's called? Is it the budget overview?
Is that it? That's it, right there.
Is it budget?
The public hearing.
But is that what the PowerPoint's called?
This is, oh.
Is it on your desktop? Do you know?
I don't know. I don't think.
Did you send it to me?
I thought I sent it to you this morning with the, with PM and had it put up on the drive. We can't look at it from the drive.
Hmm? Did you put it in the drive?
It should be in the drive.
Oh.
You have it in the drive, you know.
Yeah, I, I, go, where's your, go back into Firefox, let's try some. If he says it's in the drive, then it's in the drive.
That's where I thought it was, but.
Yeah. It's only three pages.
Great.
Wait a minute.
Is it what's in the packet?
I have like seven.
It is what's in the packet.
Having trouble finding this site.
Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Yeah, that's right. It's this one right here.
Let's see what, I can pull it down.
Yes.
Let me pull it down. Pay no attention to people behind the curtain. Sorry, give us a second.
Or on the camera.
Yeah, really?
But no pressure, sorry.
Talk amongst yourselves. That's all right. Okay, I'm going to email it to you right now, Doc. There's a PowerPoint, so you just have to open the PowerPoint.
Yep.
And it's off. Is that what happened? Your Wi-Fi's off.
Yeah, because I've got network connection.
Just two things to note on the forecast, while we're.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
So you'll see on the forecast fiscal year 20, the column highlighted in the middle, there's still a shortfall of 1.2 million to make up, but there's a couple of things. There will, there will be more to come from the state budget. According to the town administrator, the state aid number that's here is the minimum we should be expecting to receive, so that number could go up. So if so, that would be excellent news.
I just can't be accurate, I paid two excise taxes.
I know, I just, I, I know. I'm like, I eat out a lot more, I thought that. And then the GIC information came in today, which was, or in the last couple of days, which is a little earlier than usual, and that looks to be, that expense looks to be up 3.3%, which is significantly better than what it could have been, still not great. But, but that number, more, more will come on that, but that should be, that seems to be what the average increase will be on the GIC expense.
So at this point, subject to change, there's a shortfall of 1, 1-8-0-7-5-1, is that? Okay.
Correct. Yes. And then on the Article 6 detail page, the town budget and the educational budget are the, are budgets as presented. So that's what we've so far presented to them and what the town has presented.
The full amount.
So the full amounts. So 1.2, all right, and we're up.
Is John presenting or are you?
Oh, I don't really, where did you go?
It's lost her business.
I don't know. Where did he go? I don't know. Where did he go? Give him the handout. No.
Sorry, so we're getting, we're getting handouts, sorry about that. Jamie, will we get the hand, so we could go to the, so this is the public hearing for February 11th, 2019, for the 2020 budget. The, why don't we go to the, and we're getting handouts for everybody that, so we can see this better. I'm sorry about that. Can we switch to the budget slide, Doc?
No, because I don't know which one it is.
Okay. It's just the, the budget page, this page?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, that page. Okay.
This is not a format that is usually on here.
It's okay, click on that, that one click. Or how about going over here this side? Can you go that way? Okay, here we go. Go back, go back one. So since, since the, we gave this presentation to the Board of Selectmen, we made a couple of changes, or we've had some new information come up. So the current budget that we're looking at at this point, the proposed budget by the administration, is $54,768,087, which dropped that percentage rate to 5.31% from the previous, 5.39%. Some, the changes in this budget since that time, we actually, we, we got word that we had a new, a new VOTEC. We, we made a couple of offsets. We had a, a teacher retirement for a special education that we, we became aware of. And then also what we've done is we've actually increased the FDK, the FDK offset because we increased the rates the, the previous week. And then I also went back to look at sort of the mix of the pays for this year and, you know, readjusted that. So we ended up with an FDK increase of about $38,000 in, in the fee. We had the retirement result in $38,000 difference for the retirement. And we also have, but we, we got word this week of a new VOTEC student, one that's already registered, that's actually transferring into Weymouth, so, and that will, that will be at North Fork Aggie, so we have to include a tuition for that student. I mean, at the same time, we picked up two additional applications to VOTEC this week, but they're not included in the budget because I don't know that they exist currently. So, you know, from last time where we had $54,810,000, we're down to 5, 768,87 with those offsets. Also, we had spoken about a couple of other changes. When the, a couple of other changes to the budget that are included, and Doc, can you go to this page so they can see this page? Maybe a couple others. Or this one? Yeah. And I'll, I'll double back to these. So, yeah, actually, yeah, so these pages, this page here, or we can, both of them say the same thing. On, on this page, you can see the, the changes that took place, that we, we had spoken previously about a stipend for minute taking, the note-taking at school committee meetings. So we've included an additional amount in this budget for that, as well as some PD for the new superintendent, okay, that we had talked about. So all of those, those are sort of like the new offsets from what we provided with the, the Board of Selectmen. So we're down the budget, you can see in this one is 5, 54, 768,087. Up above, it's a 5.31. That, that change area there, that's for the target. Once we get the number from the advisory committee, we will be able to put a target in there, so we'll sort of be able to track these changes and, and know where we end up. Can we go back to the pivot chart? This is the, back one more, two.
Do I have to put the pivot to the?
What's that?
Is it on the screen?
Yeah. This is, this is, this just gives a different view of the changes today.
It's up here?
Go back one.
No, I think it's.
What was it? Oh, forward one. Forward one, yeah, forward one. Yeah. So just a different view of the changes, you can see them, you know, the new VOTEC move-in. These are all the changes that have happened since January 3rd, 2009. So net changes to this original budget that we proposed is $172,363,000. Also in this, the school committee has seen it, but for the public, if we can go, we identify, if we want to go to the, the, these beginning sheets here, those 1,200 accounts or, yeah, those. You all have copies here. You can't see these so much, but what the, the front column actually, actually represents is the, all the, the new additions that have been added into this budget, okay, between fiscal 19 and fiscal 20. And they include items such as, high priority items for the school committee and for the administration, such as a personnel director for central office along with support, some FTEs and teachers, and teachers at the high school in order to accommodate enrollment growth. There's also a, a new teacher in here for ELL, English language learners, because the population there is growing. And we have some, an additional adjustment counselor in this budget along with some extra guidance days and some materials for a computer science AP class. There's a crew coach for athletics, a couple of student activity stipends for a couple thousand dollars. The town also, the town, this building, and they have a technology group of two and a half FTEs that support us as well as all of our infrastructure throughout the town. And in order to right-size their organization, they're looking to add a .5. So we have an amount of 20% of that extra .5 in our budget because they provide us with the technology support and help with our telephone network and the other network across the school. So if, across the town, so if they get that FTE, then, then we will pick up that other 25% in our budget. And then we have a number of, the, a number of FTEs for special education. There's a couple of pilot programs. One of them is for, is to hire an ABA contract for in-house. And what this position would actually do would be to, we, we currently have a half-position contracted for our pre-K. This position would take care of that half contract position at the E-school and the pre-K program. And then the other half would actually be to do home service evaluations, which, which, where they'd go out to the homes to evaluate services that are needed in the home, and they would prescribe services. And then the district would actually hire their own visiting specialist in order to provide those services. Those two components actually have a cost savings because what we'd be able to do through that pilot would be to reduce the actual contracted services amounts. So there's a, the adds in this budget are about $125,000 with projected offsets of about $111,000. So the, the net result of that is somewhere around $13,000 incremental to the budget, but we think that it would be an excellent program pilot to, you know, head the district into a, a new direction that would provide a better quality service, maintain those services in-house, and would have a better visibility into those services. Another pilot we would put in special ed is a language-based program within the district. And that would be planned to have that in the middle school, because right now there isn't any program that's local around here, and we're trying to work with other schools so that perhaps we'll be able to take people into our program at the middle school, and some other school may have a program at the high school, and some other may have a program at the elementary so that kids can stay more local instead of having to go off. So there's no direct offset to that, but that potentially could result in offsets in the future. And we also have in here two special education inclusion facilitators. And what those, one would be at the high school, the other would be at the middle school. And what those positions would do would be to work with the regular education teachers in those schools and provide them PD and provide them tips and, and keys for allowing all the students with IUPs to get access to the inclusion services. So there'd be really specialists working in the area. And we believe that that would provide a better, better quality service and is actually some much-needed special, some much-needed professional development for, you know, regular education teachers, and it'd be a good service to them and as well as to the kids. In the budget, there was an occupational therapist, a request for a 1.0 occupational therapist. But the, and while there's always more need for those services, what we determined was that the actual need for those, what we really need right now on the budget, because we can't just go up forever to, you know, too high, would be one additional day of contracted services. And that's a cost of $18,000. And then lastly, there's a, in this budget, there's a request for .5 special education teachers, at what, .5 at East, .5 at, excuse me, 1.5 total, which would be a .5 at East, a .5 at PRS, and then a .5 itself. And currently, that would put them at, each at 5.0 special education teachers as opposed to the 4.5 that they have today. Another special education cost-saving measure, measure that we have is to, there's, we've identified several high-cost transportation trips. And we have in this budget a proposal to lease three special education minivans. These would be smaller vans than our big white vans and, and have three drivers so we can take over three expensive leases that currently exist. And by doing that, And by doing that, we take on drivers, that would cost $75,000, and we do van leases, which, van leases and fuel will run about 34.6. And then, but there'll be an actual offset in reduced transportation charges for those expensive runs that we know by $123,200. So, we'd actually reduce this budget by taking that action by $13,451. So, the total new items in this budget is $1,017,702. In the sheets that the community has, you also have them broken down into different ways. We look at them in terms of structural deficits or mandated services. So, it really comes up, the, on those sheets, it comes up to the same $1,017,702, but classifies them a little bit differently. That would be by structural deficit or a mandate, which would really be special education services, or a mandate with cost savings, such as that special education transportation cost savings that we have, and the ABA services, which provides some cost savings. And then we have structural deficits. We view the personnel director at central office and the support position here as a structural deficit. We've done without that for many years, so that we can provide teachers and, you know, provide other services in the field. But we're getting to the breaking point, and with a new superintendent come on, it's really important that we make sure that our structure is right-sized for our continued success. And then also, there's, you know, we looked at, another one is a structural deficit and a mandate, right, where that language-based program, it's, we don't have one, there isn't one around, but it is yet a mandated program. So, you know, we classify that as a structural deficit with a mandate.
And also the ELL.
And the ELL, yes. ELL would be a mandate as well. So...
We should point out that on, the one that's on the screen, and the one that John talked the most about, there were two additional columns there that are items that were requested by the staff, but that are not funded. So, not everything that people asked for was included in the budget.
That's it. So...
That's everything?
That's everything. That's the overview, there's the budget. We're at, the budget is 50s?
5.31, which we anticipate is going to be more than is likely to be funded, and there will be more changes, because they're all, always are changes. We have two others that may bring us some savings, personnel-related, but they just came up today, so we're not in a position to give detail to them. But we anticipate there will be more changes that will mean we can reduce the bottom line without reducing needed services, which is always what our goal is.
Right. So, the budget we have now is 54,768067, and that's a budget of 5.31%.
So, that's the presentation of the budget. Are there comments or questions on the proposed operating budget as presented from any members of the public? Or any members of the committee?
I just want to say that I appreciate John, Dr. Vines, Labois, Dr. Gallo, for your hard work in making sure that you're addressing the extra need in terms of special needs, and this pilot, the inclusion facilitators, will be a huge help also. So, I went to the presentation at the high school, you guys did a fabulous job. I think for the viewers at home that did not hear the comments and the importance of this position, Dr. Vines, if you could explain, you know, the importance, that would be great.
So, the idea behind the inclusion facilitator is to support students at, in levels Tier 1 and 2, which is general education, where they can support general education teachers in addressing any, you know, learning challenges, or ideas about how to help students, or ways to differentiate, and any low-level behavioral challenges that teachers might be experiencing that they need some support with. So, that's how that person can support all the students in every classroom. But most importantly is, many of our students, rightly so, are included in the general education classroom. And as an inclusive school district, we want to support as much access as possible to general instruction. But many of our students require a level of accommodations in order to be able to access that. And at this moment, because all of the special education teachers are teaching all day, they're not really able to get into those classrooms the way that really needs to be occurring in order to provide those accommodations to those students, so they can access curriculum. So, the inclusion facilitator really would be tasked with making sure that students are provided with the accommodations they need, that general education teachers are learning how to implement them with fidelity, to build the capacity of those general education teachers over time, so that they wouldn't need necessarily another person to be there with them. And then also to take on some of the academic testing that right now our reading specialists are doing at the secondary levels, and so that would allow those teachers to, those reading specialists to give more time to their reading services and less time to the academic evaluations. Anything else?
So, the accommodations that the inclusion facilitators would help implement, these are mandates?
These are mandates. So, it's already determined that these students require these accommodations in order to access the curriculum. And in order to really ensure that they're being implemented with fidelity, we really need special educators to be in the classroom, providing the support to the students and the general education teachers, to really build up that capacity, that knowledge base, and make sure that kids are getting what they need in the classroom, so that we can continue to expand our inclusive opportunities for students, which is really a vision of the system, so.
And it seems like, once the general education teachers have some of these skills and learn how to differentiate instruction, they'll be able to carry that forward to new students that come first.
That would be the idea. Yep. So, of course, there'll be some students who have very unique needs, and where that may not be possible. But I think that in general, expanding students' ability to demonstrate their knowledge in a variety of different ways, you know, requires some support for the general educators.
I just want to clarify, we're not suggesting this is happening. We have a talented faculty who work tirelessly to ensure the support of all students learning. I think what we're talking about is sort of growing capacity beyond what we've historically done, to begin, of a time to include more students more effectively. So, I just want to be really clear with those.
And to increase, and to increase our, our serving of children in the general education classroom, I believe we can do that.
Absolutely. Yeah. I just don't want anyone to feel like it's not occurring.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Good point.
Correct. Yeah.
Suzanne, why are you there? So, the language-based pilot?
If, if we established this for next year, would we be able to open that up to other districts to send their kids next year? Or would we focus on our own students the first year, and then wait for the future to potentially bring other students?
I think it depends on how well it's rolled out, and whether or not the teacher who takes that position, should it be funded, whether or not they have previous experience. I think that that has something, that'll have something to do with how, when we can open it up to tuitioning in students. I'd have to see how it's going, since it's a pilot in the first year, but the goal would be to be able to expand it.
Okay. So, the first year, you just want to establish it?
Yes.
Have it going?
Yes. Yes. Make sure it's successful, make sure it's something we continue to need, just to make sure that we want to keep that, because I'm thinking that, because it's a pilot, we should give it that pilot year. And then, we would love to open up that program, and then talk about opening up some other ones as well.
And what we might want to do is to try to hire earlier, when there would be a larger pool of candidates, particularly experienced candidates. And we can do that by, while we can't hire someone without town meeting approval of the budget, we can advertise for an anticipated opening, so we can see what's out there in terms of numbers, and, you know, even line up interviews and so on, so that when town meeting occurs, we're immediately ready to go. I think both that teacher and the two inclusion specialists are going to be hires, what we want, good experience, and so, the earlier we can get the word out there, the better off.
Yeah, which is why it's budgeted the way it is. I wanted to account for some experience, so that we could be starting off on a good foot.
Any other comments, questions? Hi? Dr. Vanis?
All right. Well, seeing no other comments or questions from the public, I would take a motion to adjourn from the public hearing to resume back to our open meeting.
I'll move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much. So, we will revert back to the original agenda, so...
Back to communications?
Back to communications, yes.
Yeah, I did receive a message yesterday, as did some other people, to Katie and so on, about a lack of physical access to a sports event that was at E-school, not one of our teams, but no matter. And I said that I would, to the parent, that, you know, we would immediately look up what had happened, and why this was, and get back to the parent. And I did hear back from Katie Hartman today, she's very prompt, it's saying that indeed the elevator was, was not working. What was confusing was, there was a message on it that simply said, "Do not use." So, it wasn't clear to the person who wrote whether the elevator actually was out of commission, or simply was being asked not to be used. It was, in fact, out of commission, and in fact, it's clearly a big repair, even though there was some major work done there in January. But the repair was scheduled for, and I guess weather pending now, for tomorrow, actually, the 12th. So, that was, that was accurate. There were some, some off. I don't think that should happen. However, they had checked with the fire department, they were exit doors, and because there are multiple exits in the building, apparently the fire department had allowed that. Not that that's a good thing necessarily, but it is an explanation. Katie Hartman, who's our custodian, also said that there has been a sign on that door that's not down near the gym, but that unfortunately has a large stair, staircase. And when she, so she went there this morning, and that sign, which has been there for some time now, but it was not there this morning, and therefore, we have reason to believe that, as the parent indicated, it wasn't there Friday night either, there is a new sign that's up. So, so John and I, and Katie, and our facilities person, Doug, we want to sit and talk with them about, are there other ways we could handle when we have an outage in a building where there's a public event that's on the second floor, and we don't have a working elevator? Is there a way we can notify people earlier that that's the case? So, what should we do? So, we plan to have more discussion about it, but at least we now do know what did happen. I will write to, let the parent know that as well, because that is our responsibility, public access is our responsibility. We want to embrace it and accept it for everybody, not just families and kids, but anybody who's in our buildings. That's our responsibility to have. So, I have a copy of the letter, if anyone wanted to read it personally, if you want to pick that up on the way out. So, I think that's it for the communications, except you have something.
To share information on the forecast meeting, but I think, I did that while you were setting up. Yep. So, if anybody has any questions on that forecast, though, let us know, but more to come on that. Excuse me. All right. So, item number seven, new business, 7.1 to discuss the Foster School feasibility study warrant article and act as appropriate. So, I don't think we're actually going to take any action tonight, but this was really just an opportunity for everyone to be updated on where we stand with some of the warrant discussions, because I was not at the Board of Selectmen presentation, or the Board of Selectmen meeting the other night, although I have watched the video, so I am up to speed. But also Libby has been out, so we just wanted to update where things stand. So, the warrant articles for the van leases, the Clarestory windows, and the extraordinary maintenance are approved, the Board of Selectmen approved those.
They voted to recommend them.
Voted to recommend them.
And the advisory committee, or, the advisory committee voted on two of them.
Yes. The vans and the windows?
Yes.
Okay. And then the supportive of the extraordinary maintenance, there were just some issues with the language of how that might, we needed to check in on the school committee and building authority working together on that. Just, we wanted to make sure that language was, made sense. And then, the warrant article for the feasibility study is still under review, both by AdCom, the Board of Selectmen, and I think we still have some work to do on that. They, I have spoken to members of the Board of Selectmen and AdCom, and although they haven't had any deliberations on it since the meetings, I just wanted to clarify that the good news is, in speaking to folks, I mean, everyone is understanding of what the needs are at Foster School, and that it's a number-one priority for the town. It's, the issue is that there are just some questions lingering around, does this warrant article impact us with the MSBA, the language that we have in there? Do we need to, do we need to work on the language a little bit? Do, and I've been doing some reading on the MSBA site about how you're supposed to work with them if you're going to try to put something through ahead of time. It's not highly recommended to put through articles that start talking about any kind of appropriating of funds until you've been invited into the eligibility period. So, there's several questions that we still have to answer about that. But the good news is that school committee, school department, the Board of Selectmen, and the AdCom all do recognize that Foster is the priority at this point. It's, you know, the top priority on the capital budget. So, more to come on that. I, there's a, some questions that the Board of Selectmen had presented to us, which I'm working on with Ray Estes and Linda from the school building committee, school building authority committee. And then, I think the community outreach subcommittee is going to put together some sort of frequently asked questions, and some more discussion around some of the questions that either other town officials will have, or members of the community will have. So, we'll be doing that this Wednesday? Your meeting? Okay.
I'm working on it, Rob. We'll have it on that session.
Great. And you have the list of questions from?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I thought you did. So, that is the latest and greatest on the warrant articles. So, Libby, if you have any particular questions about anything, you could watch that Board of Selectmen meeting. I think the advisory committee meeting was recorded.
It's available, yeah.
It is, it was taped. So, if it's not already available, it should be soon, if you want to watch those. Anything else on that for right now?
Yeah, I want to thank George for the great presentation that he did summarizing the warrant article before the AdCom, so, thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Yes. And for the folks who showed up to that meeting to discuss. Yes, John?
I just wanted to call to your attention the package, the, sort of a presentation, or a few slides that are in your packages, and, you know, and tell you what that is and what I did. So, I went through the MSBA, and I took a look at closed elementary schools, for the most part, you know, projects dating back from 2012 through 2018. And, you know, and the MSBA publishes all of their comps, if you would, you know, comparables, okay? And, you know, I looked at it each year, like the year 12 to 13, and then I looked at 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Took their projects down, and then I took the actual cost per square footage in order to construct the building. And then I also looked at the percentage for the actual soft cost loads, to come up with the total cost of a building. And to determine, what I was looking for is to see if I could determine, you know, what's the rate of growth for the cost per square foot in a building? And, you know, what's the sort of percentage for soft costs? And, you know, what's the sort of percentage for soft costs, you know, overall? Okay, so I took a number of comps. And then, you know, with that information, I, you know, looked at, and that's all based on, you know, the square footage of the school. There's slides, if you went to the slides there, and I don't know, John, if there's, it's probably in there, if you might be able to flash it up, if possible. But the, we're looking at Foster School in the 90,000-square-foot school. And, you know, the growth rate for cost per square foot is about 6.51% over those periods of years. Some years it was, you can see the comps, that's a little smaller, so it's really tough to see, but it's in the back. But some years it was maybe 12%, one year it's 11%, then another year it's like 1.9, another year 0.7. So I just sort of took an average of those to say the cost per square foot is going up on average, you know, 0.51% a year. And then as I went through those comps too, I actually looked at the soft costs. And those are for the design, the design of the OPM, the, you know, legal fees, bonding, and stuff like that. And those were, you know, they seemed to be trending down over that period of time. And, you know, that could be like from 30%, somewhere in the 30s, or 28, 29% down to 24.7 was, you know, what it looked like in 2018. And that could be a number of, you know, it could be two things. That could be, one, the MSBA saying, "These soft costs are too high relative to the overall project." Or it simply could be the size of the projects going up and the soft costs are relatively fixed. So not sure which one those are, but so, but the last year, the average was like a 2.477. So instead of averaging all those years, I sort of took 24.77 for soft costs. And, you know, looking at Foster and the last average cost per square foot that I got for a construction was 472. So I took that and then just, this is just modeling, that's all. There's no, there's no magic, this is just raw numbers. I don't know if it's true, not true, but it's all averages. The cost of construction for Foster, you know, in 2019, right now, you know, 42, 447, and by the time you load that with the soft cost, it would be about 52, 961. And then going across, I look at, it's like, okay, you know, what's the increase between, if the cost per square foot goes up by 6.51%, next year's cost per square foot is $502, okay, per square foot? And what this does, what this model does, is it just projects out, the cost per square foot has grown, soft costs are staying the same. What would the increase in the cost of construction be from this year to the next? And then it looks at, if Hingham were to be paying 68% of that project and the MSBA presumes pays 32, and then there's another scenario, and here, same numbers, what if Hingham paid 65 and the MSBA paid 35? What you get to see here is like, so the cost difference, the increase between 2019 just the construction cost is about $3.4 million, all right? And if Hingham would be at 2/3 of that, that would cost Hingham $2.3 million for delaying a year, or if we delayed a year, okay? And it would, the MSBA's contribution to that would be 1.1 million. If you went from 20 to 21, then you see that the difference on that is $3.6 million, whereas Hingham would be at 2.5 and MSBA would be at 1.1. And then there's a column in there that's the cost of waiting incremental, Hingham. So you can see, as you go along, what is the incremental cost to Hingham in a year? Just on modeling, I mean, nothing, this may or may not exist, right? But it's just the raw numbers. So you see, you know, one year it costs us $2.3 million, two years it costs us $4.8 million, three years it costs us $7.5 million, four years $10.3 million. And that's after the reimbursements. So we can see the cost of construction growing. What would, what would be a kink in this whole thing is a recession occurs and, you know, that could perhaps drive construction costs down and, you know, the whole thing sort of gets reset there. But, you know, I just thought that this was a decent exercise, just so people get a feel for, you know, if we remain in a booming economy, things are not getting cheaper. And it's unlikely that, I mean, I think, you know, the history would say that you're still going to have a growth rate in that cost per square foot. And this was the best way I could kind of come up and do it. Of course, you know, next year we can look at 19 and roll that in too, to see where the rates go, but, you know, it just gives us a way to sort of look at, you know, how much does it keep costing us by delaying our projects, you know, whether it be school construction or any other type of construction?
Yeah, but it's important to know this is real data that comes directly from the MSBA and not something manufactured. The only speculation here is the what if it were 32% reimbursements versus 30, 35%. But this is historic data, schools that have already been built and what they cost at the time.
John, the 90,000 square foot?
Yeah, that would be, that's probably the size that it would be K based on the student population, you know? The schools.
That would be what would be built?
That's, that's what would be built, yeah. And keep in mind that the comps that I took, they're not all 90,000 square, you know, they could, some of them are more, some of them are less. Some of them have 340 students, some of them have 680, you know? And, you know, a couple of them were even renovations that I put into the numbers here, so, you know? But this, what I just tried to do is I get it down to a square foot, they all have the regular square footages, okay? I just tried to get some number that, you know, is better than me just off the hip or trying to do a search on Google and saying, "What's construction costs?" And people are going to be looking at commercial buildings, not school buildings. So, you know, it's rich with data, the MSBA site, and this is just data right from their site, so. Just thought it'd be good to inform everybody, it's data.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there would be some way to compare your estimates for construction based on MSBA money with a project that would not include the MSBA because, just so to include the scenario where we go it alone? Because my understanding is that those projects tend to be less expensive overall.
Well, you could see, I mean, this sort of does that, Libby, in some sense, because the cost to us to go would be what you see, probably what you see, there is not going to be a lot difference between what we do on our own and what the MSBA would in fact put us through, okay? You know, not, it's generally going to be in the same vicinity, I think. So you can see where it would go, because this is trending, you know, where the costs of the buildings are going, I think.
And let me, one other thing we learned in the last week or so is that going with the MSBA, your project cost might not be that significantly different, but it's, could be quicker to build. And so this modeling helps. We're going alone?
Yeah, okay.
And so in some, you know, this modeling helps you understand, okay, if we can get it done that much faster or start it that much faster, that you don't have the grant, which is a significant, which this modeling shows is a significant chunk. But if you can speed up the process, then you don't have the inflationary element of it, so.
And I think the other piece of that too is the extraordinary maintenance that goes into the building, the longer we delay.
Right.
The more those costs are too.
Into the existing building, yeah.
So.
Well, reimbursement that we might get, you know?
Clearly looking at the numbers here, right, I mean, everybody agrees that getting the money from the MSBA is a significant pile of money. And I think we need to, you know, focus a lot of the efforts on getting the SOI set up to give us the best chance of getting the funding in this third try that we're going with for the MSBA, because clearly the more time that goes by, just the more expensive the project becomes. So, I mean, that's another thing I think that the committee and the building committee will be working on over the next couple of weeks too, is just shoring up, you know, how do we get the support of the MSBA and getting as much information as we can? Because that's really where our focus has to be on, is doing everything we can to get that matched funding from the, from the MSBA, or partial funding from the MSBA on this project. Josh, did you have something? Come on up to the, sorry.
Joshua Ross, 125 Longmont Road. I'm a numbers guy, so this is awesome. And I keep, we keep hearing as we've gone to all these meetings that it's going to be the same cost for whether we go with the MSBA or if we don't go with the MSBA. Did you actually look at buildings that were built outside the MSBA and did the same, and do the same analysis and see if it was the same square? Because I, we keep hearing it, but I don't know if it's just someone's being told it or someone's actually done the analysis to see if it really is cheaper with or without the MSBA cost per square footage and that.
Right.
Right, and so my other question was, is that would be good, when you have a cumulative cost of waiting, to put, you know, in the slide before it, it shows the total costs, you know, I think it was up to like 60-something million dollars after four years or something like that. So, you know, with the MSBA money, it's a difference of 7 million, but if it's a loan, it's a difference of like 16 million. So I think if we can show those comparison to say with or without MSBA, here's, here's what we're risking by waiting if we keep applying and keep getting turned down. I think that's another good column to have on there. And then, like Carrie just said, not only the, you know, extraordinary maintenance costs, but, you know, I've done a little digging, the cost of running the building, it is not an energy-efficient building, so if we add opportunity costs in like that into the modeling, like, okay, we're spending 100 and, well, you would know the number.
Yeah, the new building will be more expensive to operate dollar for dollar. It will be, no, it will be.
All of our new buildings are more expensive because of the cost of the kinds of heating and ventilation systems mainly.
So I noticed, so we spend like $100,000 a year on oil in Foster?
I don't think it's 100,000.
It was like Foster and the depot, I can't imagine the depot is using a ton of oil.
Yeah, I have to look at the, I'd have to.
So I can't imagine a new building would have oil, so I mean, that's 100 and.
The electrical is.
Would be gas.
I know, I looked, I looked at the numbers they sent me, it was.
Right, I mean, East, you can take, you know, take a look at East, you know, electricity up at $100,000 and Foster's at $38,000, you know?
So I was just wondering the difference.
And code changes too is another reason that they're more.
And while everything operates much more efficiently, it's just that there's more year refreshes, there's just more, more mechanical sort of going on. And they're very efficient buildings. They just cost more than the buildings that they built, you know, back in the 1950s, 60s.
But the other reason for doing this and having something in print that is modeling is there will be someone, between the time we even are invited into the program and the time we're asking for construction money, there will be someone who will say, "I knew it, this always happens, it's always more expensive than they tell you." But some of that more expensive than they tell you is because there was such a delay.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is great, I think this is.
I have to make one more disclaimer on these numbers. I'm sorry, just so, just so we've got, I just say, these are modeling, right? So my estimated grants are based on the total cost of construction. That won't happen. That won't happen. There's going to be, they won't take legal fees, they won't take financing fees, there's going to be things, it just, you know, I couldn't get too complicated in analysis because I was really looking to see, you know, on the big picture, what does it sort of cost? You know, so they, like the first, when you see the 18 million, that's not going to be the grant. It will be somewhat less because the base is going to be smaller, because they'll exclude land acquisition, they'll exclude, you know, financing, they'll exclude legal. So that total cost of that, what they'll reimburse will actually go down. But this just looks at it very simply, saying, you know, here's the amount of money, 30, 65 Hingham, 35 MSBA, or 68 Hingham, 32 MSBA, okay? So I just want to make sure that when people see this, I'm not saying that's going to be the grant, it's just, it's just a directional indicator for everybody.
And is this something the building committee can, the numbers can work on as their weight?
I'll be showing the building committee this on Wednesday, you know, we have a building committee meeting Wednesday. I plan to show them the same thing, it's on your agenda.
And Ray does have some information he's collected on schools that have gone it.
Just to add to the comment about towns that have built on their own, so I've been looking at some of those towns and some of the projects. And I haven't found that they're cheaper. They had the need, all the towns that I looked at, they all had master plans for their schools. Some of them also had master plans for their entire towns. And so then they were working off of their master plan like we are, and they had multiple projects that needed to be done. And so they could get one project at a time with the MSBA, and then they had the need for other projects, whether it was complete new buildings because of enrollment or renovations because of age. But with the other projects, they were still going by MSBA guidelines of schools or exceeding it if that was as they chose to do. They weren't necessarily making it smaller and undercutting. So that's the research that I've been, and I've found about, I think I was up to like eight towns that had done projects on their own because they had to. But there was definitely, it was definitely faster. And the other thing they recommended was using your project manager that you've worked with before was the most effective use of working on your own as opposed to necessarily using the same architect. And even from Newton, who I spoke with, they had, they've done a number of projects on their own. They either used the project manager for, they used for the schools, or that the town had done some fire station, several fire station construction, and they were familiar with that project manager as well. And fortunately, we've, you know, we've used the same project manager for all of our schools and had, you know, the middle school was resounding success of being on time, under budget. You know, we barely touched the contingency money at all. So if we can, you know, look, seek that, right. But even a project manager that the town is comfortable with, has had success with before, that was something that definitely helped them with keeping it on budget and all of that. So even though you're not going through the checks and balances, the MSBA, that was more of what I've been learning too. So it's not necessarily, you know, chopping $10 million off the project that I didn't see from anywhere, but I can try and go back and look at some of those. There aren't as many of them around and got to find them on, figure out which towns they are, and then go find the details in their town meeting warrants and all that kind of stuff, so.
But just to be clear for people in the audience and people at home, we are submitting a third SOI and we are pushing forward to get MSBA funding at this point in time. We are not, there's nothing under consideration for going it alone as we stand here today. We still are trying to go through the MSBA to get the funding, because that, while it would take, can take longer, it is definitely a participation in the project cost that is helpful. And if we got accepted now, you know, the process starts, accepted in 2019, that gets the process started.
And Libby and Kate, the Board of Selectmen did vote to submit the SOI. So the two votes are done that are needed for that SOI application, for the third application, so. That happened Tuesday night, last Tuesday night as well.
Can I ask John one more question while I'm standing here so I don't think I back up? So for the MSB application, do they tell us what type of building we can build, or do we say, "Hey, we've been doing some research, we see these other green, energy-efficient, net-zero buildings, we want to go down this path." Will you let us do that? Or do they just say, "No, here's the building you need to build," and that's it?
Well, I think, no, actually what happens, Josh, is that it's, we'll go through, you know, enrollment study and then a programmatic study, okay? Of like, what type of programs you have to run and how should the building be designed, okay? You know, what do you need within this building? And then the designers will start building around that. So that's it. They don't, they don't necessarily pick a model and say, "This is the building you have to build," but it really is the designers, the designer could build, they could build a different, any type of school, it doesn't have to be a model school, right? And they're going to build based on what your program needs are.
Okay, so the building.
You get things like square footage of classrooms of different types. They designate certain kinds of rooms you have to have.
Yeah.
How many special ed rooms, for example, for the number of students. the number of students you have, or the number of different kinds of, of programs that you have. So there are a lot of things that are dictated for consistency across the state so that somebody doesn't have, you know, ten art rooms and somebody else has difficulty getting an auditorium.
Right.
They will not, but they will not, likely not allow an auditorium. In fact, we only have an auditorium at the middle school because it was a big middle school, so they let us use a model that was really, was a high school.
Okay. I just, I've been looking around and seeing all these new elementary schools that are twenty-first century and zero net energy, and they use, you know, they cut out a hundred thousand dollars in energy costs, and they have all these other things that, you know, are a benefit, not just the fifty-five million dollars. So I don't know if it's something that prohibits us from wanting to do because the MSBA would say no, or do we just say, as a town, this is what we want to do, we want to be part of this new school and all these, I don't want to say bells and whistles, but innovation and this is how we want to, you know, go forward, where they say no, or they just say, oh, you meet all the requirements anyway.
Do you think those schools were built by themselves, Josh, or were they with the MSBA? Because, I mean, MSBA, they...
No, that's a good question.
...incentives sometimes for energy efficiency and LEED certification and stuff like that, which we went through in the middle school. So those, 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 I don't know whether the incentives are still there, and we won't know anything until we get accepted and stuff as to what the overall reimbursement will be.
Well, there's two schools in Massachusetts.
They certainly strive for energy efficiency and, you know, those types of certifications. And, and those are, those are, I think they're, a lot of them are great, I think some of them turn, they're, they're all good because they're all energy efficiency, but sometimes they tend to break too, and then you have like more expensive repairs as well, so.
Your whole roof of solar panels, but I'm just, because there's two towns I found in Massachusetts who have it, Worcester Elementary School and Cambridge is opening up, these new schools that are...
Be interesting to see if the MSBA built them, you know, or contributed to them.
Cambridge is doing their own.
They have deep pockets.
Right, but, okay.
Because they're a big city.
And you will likely, the, the building committee will want to go on site visits when they're looking to hire an architect and project manager sometimes as well. So, and those architects who are in the market for being employed for a school building are pretty familiar with the MSBA requirements and what they will fund and what they won't fund, but it's worth going on these visits because sometimes they'll fund a particular aspect of the building, but maybe the whole building is beyond what they want to do to be consistent.
And so the building committee meeting on the thirteenth, and we postponed all of those, that's about, so it's the thirteenth, I forgot to tell you last week, I'm sorry, we postponed from the sixth, but this Wednesday, seven-thirty, this room.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So moving on, seven point two to discuss a proposed draft of the twenty-eighteen annual Is, Dr. Gallow, are you gonna speak to this, or John, or?
We have two seven point twos, you know, here, and we have a seven point in, in your hand, actually.
Okay.
So, so the next one that is the proper number is seven point two, which is the...
It is the, yeah, other way around.
The homeschooling is...
Seven point three.
So seven point three is this, or seven point three is the homeschool application?
I think the one we're gonna talk about right now is the annual homeschool.
We just have to be careful what we put in the minutes.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna talk about the annual report now, yes?
So there is one homeschooling, there are three children involved in the family.
Homeschooling, sorry.
And it's there, two of the children have been homeschooled, and the third child was at Hingham Middle School earlier in the year. So this is a repeat homeschooling for, for this family, and the request is for all three of the children, so I would recommend that this be approved, and, and we'll clarify the typical sequence of paperwork, I would say.
I'll make a motion to approve the homeschool application of Lavinia Clayton, grade six, for the period of December third, two thousand eighteen, through the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, and Christian, grade four, and Eloise Clayton, grade two, for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Second, and any questions, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. All right, so now the annual report.
So we get an annual request from the Selectmen's Office, they're the ones that put together the annual Hingham Town Report, which are those reports on the very top shelf, the first two bays at the top shelf over there, and it's for the calendar year two thousand eighteen, and that's why you will see references to both two thousand eighteen and FY eighteen and FY nineteen, it gets a little bit confusing, but it's because they're on a calendar year basis. And so we've used the same kind of a template over the last few years of the categories of things that we write about, and then we try to think if there are other new things, things that happened in this past year, and of course, in the past year, significant part of the calendar year two thousand eighteen was spent on the superintendent search, though that is a new thing that's added in there. We always have a, a section about the budget that was approved last year at the town meeting, and we always have information about student performance, and we have information about new members of the administrative staff and so on. So these should look, do look, and these pages do look and should look like past reports, but we want to make sure that you've seen them and had an opportunity to offer edits or to, or other changes or emissions or whatever, so that we can get this in because it's due immediately after vacation, and we wouldn't have another opportunity to do that. So we don't need a formal vote, but we'll certainly take input that others confirm is that it's...
So I just have one thing, on page three of the first paragraph, it discussed the school committee met in the planning session, and it talks about the priority being a human resources director. I was just thinking that maybe we should change it to be personnel director, just to be consistent with the ask in the budget.
So the comments...
I think human resources is a nicer term for personnel.
Human resources encompasses a lot more than personnel. So maybe it's, we should change it in the budget list, because I see this function incorporating a lot of different tasks and not just personnel.
Okay. We're, you know, we're thinking of the things that, kinds of things that we gave you last year that would take load off of a lot of different, so, so that is really more human resources, because the person would have him put into professional development, into maintaining the licensure records, the courses and approvals and, and reimbursements that teachers get.
Compliance is such a huge piece of this. Too. We talk about all the mandates that, that are on the school department, that seems like it would be a big piece of what this person does too. I don't know which human resources personnel, which one captures it more accurately, but yeah, I just think we need, we should be consistent, though, with what we're calling it.
I think I should change it in the budget, because it is, you know, we should consider it broader than...
Okay, just the personnel.
Personnel. Thanks, good point.
Thank you.
What do you go with that?
So next time you see a budget, there'll be, it's gonna be a change of... Not a number, just a name, just the title.
Okay, other thoughts?
We do have a couple weeks, so feel free to submit any comments or edits.
Take a look at it.
After the February break.
What we would do is do another draft and perhaps share it with your secretary, just so we're sure it's, you all are happy with.
So, yeah, so send the notes to Pam, is that, so they should look at it, read it, send notes to Pam?
Yes, we'll give notes to Pam to do another draft, but then I'm saying...
Oh, and send it to them? And send a Google Doc to them, or?
Well, I don't know if it would be a Google Doc, but some kind of a document.
Okay.
But just have, well, we can send it to everybody, but then it gets hard because somebody says, want to have a designated, you know, checker of the edits, I think.
Yeah, so how do, right, what would be the best way to get your input?
Well, just like we said, right, the committee should send us feedback to Pam by a certain date, or are you saying it should go to Kay?
No, 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 I guess we're on cross paths here. I'm suggesting that we will take what things you give us tonight and have Pam make those changes, because we know there's your consensus on those. And then send that revised document to Kay to verify.
Okay, I got the sense that they were gonna review it and send comments later.
They want a little time to look at it first.
Oh, they want more time to look, okay.
Yes, so that's why we said just send us anything to Pam.
Yeah, we should send it to Pam then directly.
Do you want people to send, the committee members send me thoughts that you have, and then?
I'll compile them.
I can compile them. When do you, when do you need to submit this? Because we have a meeting on February twenty-fifth.
It's the Monday after the break, right?
Yep.
I think it's, isn't it two, isn't it fifteen? I thought it was after the break it was due.
I, I, okay, I didn't know, I'm not sure the day.
Hold on one second, I have it originally.
No, it's okay.
I'm looking.
I think she wanted it.
They, they don't like it to come late.
No, do you know what it's due?
They set a deadline and...
We should meet it.
I'm looking.
The warrant has to be on the beginning of March.
Can you do me a favor, the last page on my name, can you just add the abbreviations A dot F dot to my name? And I'll send you that in writing.
At the end of it, Kelly?
Yeah, not a big deal.
A dot F?
A dot F dot.
A dot F?
Those middle names.
In the middle.
A.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, the answer is yes. Let me know, all right, let me know, and then I will let everyone know, so Jamie will let me know when the deadline is, and then I will let you folks know if you have questions and how we're gonna compile them, or comments to add. Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? No? All right, so that is seven point two or slash three. All right, seven point four to receive notification of appointments of Para-educator Stacy Lamieux at Hingham High School and Lawrence Nikomo at the East School, and to receive notification of the resignation of Christina Zanetti, kids in action teacher. Anyone have any items under forty-eight hours? No? All right, then we'll move on to subcommittee and projects reports. Let's start with long-range planning.
We met with Capital, we met with Capital on one twenty-three, right? We haven't had a meeting since then, have we? Okay, we did? Okay. We did? When was the meeting? Maybe at the, at the, at the budget meeting, or? I forget when we did that.
Give us a quick update on the presentation to the Capital Outlay Committee, right?
Yeah, we met with them, you know, and we spent about three hours or a little over three hours with them to go over, you know, our extensive list, and I thought it was a, you know, it was a good meeting, productive meeting. Subsequent to that, I did hear from Eric, who asked me for some follow-up information, you know, relative to the special education van, kind of, kind of looking at the Foster article, the Foster Extra Order Inauguration Article, and seeing if there's anything we could reduce, which, which there could be, because we had fifty thousand and I anticipated, and we also had fifty-five thousand for the, the Quick Connect switch, so I told him about those. He had questions about the special education vans, where we're looking to get three of them, at least small, three smaller vans, and he wanted to know if that was one of the same vans that was in the budget, which it is not, because the van that's in the budget is one of the replacement vans for, you know, one of the big seven D vans, not one of the smaller vans. And asked for some pricing on the playground, you know, where the other hundred and five thousand dollars came in, and I was just able to send Libby's beautiful CPC application and say, pricing starts on page nineteen. So I think, I think that worked, and so the, and the, since then, you know, I mean, there's been some, some dialogue, but not, I haven't heard, you know, much about, you know, the level that they're thinking of, so. I know that, I did hear that the, the, there was an email out there that, that sort of like indicated the school committee was using some money inappropriately from Capital, which, you know, I diffused really as being, you know, absolutely not true, I mean, because I think what happens is there seems to be a little, there's, there's a lag where we go through our exhaustive list of, you know, asking for what we really need for the business and then, or for the, for the school department, and then when the, the capital actually gets determined, they determine a number, and I guess in their number, they sort of give an indication of what they don't want to include, but, you know, then we re-adjourn with the, with the long-range planning, and we say, okay, you know, if this is the number, how do we get our number down to their number? And we come up with what we want to actually spend the money on, and I create a list that gets into the budget book, but in, in, and the budget book gets published and stuff, but in the past, I haven't provided anybody that list. So we may be spending the money based on what, the way we think the money should be spent, but it may be different than what they've actually published in the warrant, okay? And, you know, and that's the school committee's authority. I mean, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-four really says that once an appropriation is given to the school committee, that it's the school committee that determines, you know, where that money gets spent. However, so, so I just, I just, you know, made mention of that, and I think that the warrant this year will continue to have the, the items that Capital Outlay thought should go, but they will put the note regarding the school committee's authority, you know, under chapter seventy-one, section thirty-four. And then I'll, I also, I sent them off, here's the list that we're, the operating office is from my budget book, which is published, and this year, once I do that, not only will I send it to everybody that gets it, but I'll send it to Capital Outlay too, saying, here's how we're planning to spend our capital, you know, you may have said one thing, because they, they do it in the warrant, they're gonna, they specify it, but we don't know, we have to go back, back together, do a lot of figuring, determine the priorities as the time goes by, we'd never have it printed in time for the warrant, so we select.
But that didn't always happen, John. What used to happen was that we would meet with them, present our case, and they would come back and say, you know, we can give you this much, you give us the prioritization at that point.
Okay.
And we always had a second meeting with them after we had done the prior, prioritizing, and therefore they had what our priorities were.
Right.
It's only been in the past several years that there has been that they go, we do our presentation, but then they go their way and we go our way, and there's a, there's a gap.
I don't, I don't think we'd have time to get back with them and reprioritize our list and really specify, because it's too early in the year too, yeah, no, sure.
So Michelle, we started at, you know, budget, the long-range planning, the capital budget at two point eight million dollars, we went down to one point eight, and that's why we are at the... budget, at $2.8 million, we went down to $1.8, and that's where we are at this moment. Last year, we got less than $1.1. So, let's hope for the best, and discuss that when it comes.
It was, I did sit in for maybe an hour and a half for that meeting, and it was a great meeting. And I just wanted to point out, too, that one great question that had come up at that meeting from one of the advisory committee members was talking about the vision of, for computer literacy in the district, which was an interesting, really interesting conversation. And Libby gave a great background on the Code Red Initiative that Dr. Jamie and Hef and the staff have been implementing over the past couple of years. And it was probably the most exciting part of the, of the meeting and the conversation, and they were very, the members were very impressed with it. And, I mean, there was a lot of wow, and it just reminded me of sometimes that people don't know of the innovative work that is being done with the help of Dr. Jamie's leadership and the Hingham Education Foundation. So, it was nice to, to have some people really engaged in that conversation and hearing about that good work, so.
And then with recognition of the fact, too, that especially considering the fact that we've got this computer science initiative going on, we need to have a presentable website for the Hingham schools.
Yes. That's true.
And also, you know, it was alluded that, you know, this has taken a good chunk of the capital budget, and perhaps that eventually, John, right? But this could be put it on the operating budget, because it is part of the education.
Yeah. Right. Exactly.
Yeah, because we will just continue to take, you know, a big chunk. I mean, between the two, the, just the, the regular ongoing needs, maintenance for the computer, plus the, you know, you have to keep your network in a steady evolution, which be, you know, Joe's got a five-year, seven-year plan where these switches are going to have to be changed out. You know, that's over $400,000, nearing $500,000. And if you need, want to do some type of enhancement, so you can introduce new programs that, you know, are out in the world and, you know, evolve, we're looking at half a million dollars just in technology, you know? And that's taking away from our capital. So, I mean, it's sort of one, one of those things that should be in the operating budget at some point. It's got to move over there.
All right. Thank you. Anything for policy?
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report. Community outreach, while I'm on you.
We will be meeting Wednesday at 9:00 in the school department, and we will be discussing the warrant articles, how we want to socialize them, putting together a question, which Carrie has started, which we mentioned earlier before, kind of a question and answer sheet about Foster, the history of Foster, what have we spent on Foster, some of the issues that we keep seeing recur. So, John, I don't know if Carrie's reached out to you, but.
I was hoping we could, and I figured once we.
Slide on the questions and take a look at the answers. I'd love to send it to you for accuracy to make sure we're correct.
And Liza, you had, you had put together a slide, I think.
Did you send that stuff to Carrie?
That you had put together, I think, that you sent to AdCom with the history?
Yeah. Let me send you, yeah, that's the, the presentations that we made, uh, two years ago at town meeting, and to the Board of Selectmen for the first SOI. So, I'll send those to you.
Yeah.
What is the MSBA? What is an SOI? Those kind of things that just people who haven't been following this closely.
Yeah, actually, I'm just going to share this whole, I've started making a folder, I'll just share the whole folder.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So, thank you for doing that. Special Ed Subcommittee, we were going to have a meeting tomorrow night. I don't know if you saw my email, but we canceled it. CPAC has also canceled their meeting because of the weather, and we canceled our, or will postpone our Special Ed Subcommittee so far after, actually, probably in March. I'll be away that last week, but we'll circle back on that. Seller negotiations?
We met Friday and to meet with Dr. Gallo, and that'd be the subject of our executive session tonight.
Ed, do you have anything to report on the warrants that are in here, the dollar amount? They keep checking along, so everyone sees their item nine warrant reports. They're just budget warrants, not town meeting warrants.
I would like to just.
Yeah?
I attended the PRS Council meeting today.
Oh, yes.
And there's a celebration afoot, realizing that PRS is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year.
Ah.
So, the request, both to the audience as well as the people at home, the administration at PRS is looking for memorabilia, old photographs, old programs, pictures, what have you. So, if you have something, make it known and contact the administration at Plymouth River School.
When is the celebration?
It's being worked on, to be announced.
And I have one, my first snap there.
Two things. One, thank you to everybody who went to Chipotle tonight and supported us for dinner. They're going to donate a portion of their proceeds to SNAP. And then we are going to be having Pizza Palooza. We have, I think, eight pizza vendors right now that are participating. It's going to be on Wednesday, March 27th, at Hingham High School. So, please come out and support that. And I had one other thing that probably should have brought up under 48 hours, but I went to the Hingham Historical Society this weekend. It was the Family History Day. Mr. Hoyt invited people, and I just, the student work was amazing. And so, I just wanted to congratulate him and the students for all of the projects, the websites, the presentations, the papers. It was just really impressive. And just thank you to the Hingham Historical Society, too, for supporting our kids.
It was very impressive.
Yeah, it was.
The documentaries in particular.
Yeah. Very, very impressive.
Yeah.
And the building looks beautiful, and, yeah, it was a great event. And they're planning to make that an annual event there. So, yeah, it was great. Any other liaison reports?
Yes, I attended the high school council meeting on February 6th. They have some great initiatives that they're working on. One of them is the solar energy. Peter Swanson, no relation to Richard Swanson, came and gave a nice presentation. He visited Plymouth and other community where they have already solar panels. So, they are organizing a field trip to go out there and visit some schools or towns that already have some project going on. They are sort of like brainstorming the idea of perhaps considering a solar panel on the walkway from the parking lot to the high school, you know, and coming up with some design and see how people would, you know, buy into something like that, which would be great, because it provides non-cover during the winter, you know, for people attending town meeting and stuff like that, lights and so on, generated by the solar power. So, it may be an idea. So, just want to let the school committee know that they are working very hard on that. And, you know, they're working a couple of other things also. They're thinking about having some trainings and drills conducted throughout the high school on school security. Perhaps they may change, you know, the, the time that they do it, perhaps during the lunchtime or during a sporting event, or things like that. So, they're still working on that, and we'll let you know more.
Is Peter Swanson a teacher?
He was a teacher.
Was a teacher.
Retired, yes.
He's a retired teacher?
Yes. Queensy.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And the wife as well.
I'm from Foster for the school council. On Friday, February 15th, I believe everyone, the school committee was invited. They are doing at 8:45 a Foster Computer Science exhibit, and so they're going to be demonstrating all the digital literacy that, and computer programming that they've been learning in the classroom. And they're inviting the Board of Selectmen and other town officials to come and meet with the students in grades K through 5, and the teachers, to showcase everything they've been doing. So, it'd be great if people can stop by.
So, Liza mentioned about. You know.
Oh, they would like an RSVP by Wednesday, too, so.
We should do RSVP, too.
Erin McGrath?
Could you send me her?
I can re, I'll resend this.
You can write that in Hingham schools.
I'll resend it to everybody.
All right. Thank you.
So, Liza had mentioned about the article in the paper, the governor's, you know, budget and so on. I met with Patrick O'Connor, Senator Patrick O'Connor, at the Federal Full Law Supper that they organized, the Indianapolis organized with some other members of the community, which was a great event. So, I spoke with Senator Patrick O'Connor about, you know, additional monies for our school, and how Garrett Bradley used to identify money and contact us, and, you know, sort of like give us an idea of where we could apply for grant. So, Senator O'Connor said he would look into and send us a letter. So, I just wanted to report that.
Any other liaison reports? All right.
Did, was I able to reach Emily Wentworth, who's over in the zoning office, about the Beale Street project? And she indicated they were, they were going to be in two phases, the very first one being occupied this coming September. Now, that project has a Building 1 and a Building 2. Building 2 was the first one being built, even though it's the one furthest to the back that you can see from the street. And then, and that will be about 180 units, and then the second one will come further into the next year. So, would impact mainly the second year. And they, Emily is preparing the materials for the lottery that will be involved, because of the number of affordable units that will, that will be there. So, that, that was helpful information for our planning for the audience at home. That project is in the Plymouth River School District, not the, not the Foster District. And again, when we did redistricting, when we opened East School, we redistricted with two larger schools and two smaller schools in terms of number of classrooms. And Foster and Plymouth River were the two smaller schools. So, we had anticipated bringing students into those because of big projects, one in, one in each district.
So. Thank you for that update. All right. On that.
Okay. Oh.
I just, one more.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I don't want to forget that at the last meeting, June had presented us with a draft resolution. I don't know if we assigned someone to work on that. I know I suggest that I would be glad to help. Should we work on that for the next couple of meetings?
Yes.
Do you want to meet your looking to that?
I would love for you to be volunteered.
I would like to make the proposal that we hold off until we hear more from the House and the Senate about what their proposals are, just because we did pass the resolution, we could reissue the resolution we passed.
No, I was thinking about that, truly, yeah.
But that, for us to be able to react to what will be coming out, as opposed, not, you know, we're not opposed to the resolution, but that, you know, the governor's proposal has come out, and now there's analysis, and I'd like to see what else is coming. Still send the message to our representatives that we're looking for something, but personally, I'd like to be able to react to new news.
Yeah, well, I mean, we do have a resolution out there already. It was just perhaps a matter of updating it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could look at that. I, I don't want to spend as much time as we spent on the last one to get something done, so, since I still support it, but it's just my thought.
All right. So, maybe Carlos, if you could start updating it, so that when we do get the new news, we have it ready to go?
Okay.
Does that make sense? So, update the language based on what June had provided to us, and then, and then as we get updated information from the legislator, we can relook at it.
I know that, you know, I'm extended, but I was looking at the school safety resolution that we did. We got the superintendent, we got the students to join our resolution, but we have not updated that either on their website. If that's okay with you, I'd like to get that taken care of.
Put it up on the website? Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. All right. Anything else until, no? All right.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to move to executive session, not to return to open session, for the purpose of approval of minutes of the executive sessions held on October 15th, 2018, and January 16th, 2019, and the discussion of contracts of non-union employees, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Second?
Second.
And roll call?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right. We are adjourned to executive session. Our next meeting is February 25th. A wonderful school vacation week, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I do this for each day in session?
You can do it just to notify the.